Okay. Like to call to order the Wednesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Tenino Planning Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Dan Penrose with SCJ Alliance, our planner is not here. Okay, let's look at this agenda, which consists pretty much of approving minutes, but if anybody wants to add anything?
I would act like to add a couple things, just for an update. Wonder if Matthew had any update on that policy about a month. So I maybe add that to agenda, just to see if there is anything and then adding, what to call it? I guess I have to explain it out there at the property that the fire department is looking at. Apparently, it doesn't include fire departments as one of the things that can be done out there on that property.
And the master plans.
Yeah, that wasn't, fire stations weren't in there. So I, I think the fire department asked for that to be changed, see if we could add fire departments. So I would like to start either just have a quick conversation about can we, can we add that to that zoning area?
Yeah.
I don't know how to make that into a nice, easy.
Well, we already talked.
Need to look at the zoning for the western Tenino zone during the comp plan updates, because it was originally designed to be like plan this entire area.
Whole community.
A whole community, and obviously, that's not going to happen anymore for several reasons, but so.
We can talk, yeah, I just wanted to go over real quick.
And Dan's on virtually too, so.
Oh. Dan is here. Okay, so let's look at the agenda with those two additions.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's look at the minutes for the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three public hearing. Should be in your packet, if you haven't looked at it previously. Good minutes, I think.
I make a motion to approve the eight sixteen public hearing minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's go to the meeting before that, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and take a look at those minutes. We didn't have a chance to approve those last meeting.
I motion to approve the seven nineteen meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, no public comments, no members of the public are present. Dan, do we have a report? No, can he not talk?
I think he's trying to unmute himself.
Can you hear us?
Can you chat? Maybe you could just chat if you have nothing.
Oh, we're muted.
Dan, do you have a report to provide?
Can't hear you.
Try now.
Hmm.
I am very much confused.
Got to be libriers.
Is there a volume on the meeting software also?
I don't see it on.
To click the computer, oh, that's another one.
Oh, change it to default.
Looks like it's working, the microphone's working, speakers.
Can you change it to default, up at the top there under microphone?
Is it working now?
Wait. Dan, say something. Oh, I'm muted now.
You have a dry race.
Dan, can you try saying something?
Yeah.
There we go, yes.
Good one.
Okay, that sounds good, I can hear you great.
Nice.
I can hear Will too.
He probably didn't hear your question.
Did you have a report to provide, you were, we're trying to figure out the speaker situation?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a few things to report out on, but nothing too ground shattering.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, we're already at that point in the meeting, that's cool.
You missed some of the good part.
So the, the grants, brought the grant submitted for the comp plan grant in the amount of a one hundred thousand dollars has been submitted to the city for signature by the mayor and then off to Commerce, and so we're pretty much ready to go on starting the comp plan periodic review. Most of you have seen that scope of work already, and so the grant just kind of formalizes that with Commerce. Some of the particulars of the way the grant works is the, much like the Housing Action Plan, the bulk of the funding, twenty percent, is held off until the final deliverable. So we'll kind of allocate that over the effort over the next year and a half. Because Tenino is a slower growing city when compared to other cities in the state and because of the smaller population size, it actually qualifies for an automatic extension for an additional year. At this time, we are not going to take Commerce up on that offer, but there's additional grant monies available for climate resilience. As, as we look through the comprehensive plan, the new legislation coming out of the legislature and through Commerce is, requires a climate resiliency chapter. Maybe I'll stop right now and ask, have others heard about that?
I know about it a bit, I don't know about the grant, extra grants, but I know what kind of a bit about the.
So yeah, I think that sounded like Commissioner Waterson, there's, there's an extra hundred thousand dollar grant for incorporating the climate resiliency into your plan. There's a couple variety of schedules for incorporating that work, and I think with the extra year that Tenino, the comp plan, we could pretty easily incorporate that extra climate resiliency chapter into our comp plan at this time and also, you know, just, so we'd be doing it at the same time, so it would be an extra amount of money to do that update. So I, I kind of want to put that to the commission and hear some feedback about whether you think we should kind of do the comp plan update the way we have a package with the current hundred thousand dollar grant from Commerce, or whether we should also apply for a climate resiliency grant and incorporate that effort into our, our work at the same time.
So I have a question real quick, so the, the money, the hundred thousand dollars for the climate resiliency grant, is that only to be used for completing that section? Or is that money?
Yeah, Alex, that, that's a good question, and it does have to be spent on that piece.
Do we have to use the extra year in order to be able to do that? Do we, we won't be able to include it with just the, within the normal timeframe?
I, I don't think so, I don't know, I mean, right now, it's, it's pretty fluid, the grant, I'm sorry, the climate resiliency requirement only came out in May, and so they're kind of dropping this on most of the cities, particularly in Western Washington, and most of the cities are kind of freaking out because they are also up for an extension. So my, my recommendation is if you think we should do it at the same time and not do it in a separate effort, then we would probably move into some of that extra time that is allotted to slower growing cities like Tenino.
I have a quick question. How specific is the like terminology of climate resiliency? Like, what does that incorporate? Like, is it more broad, does it include like planning for water issues, does it plan for fires, or is it just like very specific?
Maybe ask that question a little bit different, so that Matthew, so I can, I can answer it specifically. I'm trying, I'm trying not to, it's, it's all kind of new, so I, I don't want to.
I guess.
Prophecy or just kind of guess of what, but I could try to answer a specific question.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking, like, obviously, Tenino has a desire for climate resiliency, just like everyone else does, but I'm trying to understand for the hundred thousand dollars, is there a broad enough terminology that it could include several different things that we're already talking about? Like water issues?
I can, I will provide an email to the, to the planning commission outlining the climate element overview. But let me share with you right now what you're supposed to do within the parameters of HB eleven eighty-one, that's the House Bill number that was passed and signed into law. There, you, you do have to have an element just related to climate, and that must have goals and policies, just like other elements have goals and policies. This particular element has to have goals and policies that are designed to improve climate preparedness and recovery efforts from climate induced or, or related disasters and, and response for those emergencies. So that, that part's mandatory, it has to be in the, the element. You also have to look for ways to avoid worsening environmental health disparities and maximize economic, environmental, and like EJ, environmental justice, prioritize that as part of, you know, throughout your entire comp plan. And then finally, it has to have a greenhouse gas emission sub-element that looks at how you might reduce emissions and vehicle miles traveled, which also called P M T, in your city. So that's a particular requirement within Thurston County itself, since we're one of the largest counties in the state.
I would say it's good to work, do it as part of our overall plan, just because it hits on a lot of different things in the plan, so I think if we can integrate those, it's a good idea. And I also think if we have it in our comp plan, there's going to be billions of dollars being spent on some of these things, and if we have it in our comp plan as soon as possible, that makes it somewhat, that much better to go for any grant monies that are available to do some of these things.
I also think.
So I think, go ahead.
I also think like if the money is available, we should probably just go for it in effort to like make sure that we're really like coming out with a good product overall. Like, if we're going to spend part of the original hundred K for climate resiliency, we might as well get the other hundred and use the original for just the other parts of the comp plan. It just allows us to use the money further.
So right, right now, they've got the carrot out there, right, which is the money to try to persuade municipalities to add this to their comp plan. Eventually, in the next number of years, does it look like this will be a required part of the comp plan? I guess that'd be my first question, and my second question would be, what, what does this, if we implement this now, what does this do long term that could be a negative for adding the climate resiliency language? Those would be my two questions.
Yeah, can you, can you all see me or just hearing?
No, we can see you.
Okay, alright.
You're on the laptop screen. And the big screen.
The first, the answer to the first part of that question, Alex, is that yes, it is mandatory.
Okay.
It is mandatory for the eleven counties and cities in those counties, and it's mandatory for all counties that are planning under GMA, so it's a mandatory element. I agree with you that they're holding this thirty million dollars in front of people as an incentive to get it done sooner rather than later. Right now, Commerce or the legislature has not indicated and has not given Commerce any latitude in timeframe in which this work has to be done. Most other cities, say your Belvues, your Tacomas, your Spokanes, your, your Olympias, maybe not as much Olympia, because they've already done some climate work, but they're, they're freaking out because there's, it's another thing on top of everything else that they're doing, right? Affordable housing, periodic updates, TIPs, all this other stuff. So I think, I think it's probably wise to try to incorporate it into the work we're doing because we are in the, you know, just starting off with the periodic update. I don't know whether the extension on our periodic update also applies to the climate resiliency element. So we may need to be in a situation where we adopt the climate resiliency element.
Do you have something with, to do with this?
Yes.
Oh.
Matter of fact, you just ran the entire law, it was passed on that, and if you're only going for two hundred thousand, I think personally, you should be going for three hundred. My goal this year is cleaning that building up right across the street. I've been talking to him about it for months, paint job, lighting the roof, everything. I bought that truck over there with turning up for forty-seven hundred dollars since I first cracked my business in twenty nineteen and lost my ass. I'm not doing that again. I'm going into business with these folks and US marine equipment as well for boats. I have a car already picked out outside the shop. I don't want to clean up the entire shop and start selling national legitimate rigs off that lot over there, so stuff it. It's thirty years old, broken, and you gotta pay five times as much as it's worth for.
I like what you're saying, does that have to do with this stuff?
As far as your initial climate control policy thing that you're talking about, go for free. Why not, Tenino's always been a great fundraising city.
Alright. Thanks, alright, go ahead, Dan.
You got thirty million dollars in front of your face, you're the United States government, take three hundred thousand and run with it.
Let us, let us finish talking about it.
Okay.
We're just starting to talk about it here. Go ahead, Dan.
I, I think that, I heard three hundred thousand, I think we're only talking about two hundred thousand, two one hundred thousand dollar grants from Commerce.
That are available, correct.
I missed something.
And one thing, I think, I definitely think it's better to be proactive and in the driver's seat when approaching these things versus sitting back and then being told, does that make sense? So I do like the idea of leveraging the money to do something that we're already doing, where we can actually set the initial standard. I would agree with that.
So I, I, so I hear that, let me give you a little bit more additional information, and again, I'll put this in an email for the, for the planning commission. I guess I am seeking a sense of the planning commission about whether we should apply for the climate resiliency grant, which is due on October thirty-first.
Are there any downsides to applying for this grant?
Pardon?
Are there any downsides?
Well, yeah, so I'll read a few other, other things about like policies that could come out of the climate resiliency plan. You could have something about certain types of infrastructure projects have to include climate, so like a charging station, some, some of that is already in the works, where you have to have an electrical vehicle infrastructure charging station that's part of your plans. There, there's a discussion in here about urban heat resiliency strategy, which means, you know, without going into all the details, you know, urban areas, paved areas, rooftops, you know, structures absorb heat and then radiate heat and, and keep everything a lot warmer than they would be out in the woods, right? So they're, they're building techniques that can go to help mitigate the urban heat, that is, the heat islands that occur in cities. Certain types of planting plans for municipal projects and other, you know, using certain type of native plants and, and other things like that. You know, the wildfire urban interface, we, we've talked about before, that was a big, big, big topic at the Planning Directors Conference that I attended last week in Shalane. The, the planning directors in the cities don't really know how to deal with that yet, but there could be something in the climate element that talks about mitigating wildfire and mitigating other things that are more prone to happen with the, the advancing of the climate warming and changing. So it's hard to know upfront all of the different details that might emerge, but it, you're kind of grabbing the tiger by the tail and, you know, better hold on, and I think, I think that the kicker is, is that everybody has to do it. So the real question is not if you're going to do it, the real question is when are you going to do it?
And then my question.
So finally, the, 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 the main negative that I see is that you're distracting from or adding to all of the other things under consideration that, that the group that we're doing as far as advancing the land use and housing and transportation and parks and utilities and capital facilities. All those other things are now, are now, you know, on par with this climate resiliency chapter that we're, we're being asked to do. So it just adds to the workload and, and adds to, you know, potential controversy because this is a new thing that, you know, people are going to, you know, have to work through.
Okay, I do have a question, so the, the items that you just got done listing that could be a part of the climate resiliency stuff, are those things tied to the money? Or is that part of the climate resiliency whether you take the money or not?
The latter, those are examples of implementation activities that could be found in your climate resiliency chapter in your policies and goals.
It's going to be like a set of goals and policies.
Everybody has to do an element, and the money doesn't dictate, you know, the grant money from Commerce doesn't stay what your outcomes have to be at this point.
So I guess, I guess.
They provided some early guidance in June that they're now having to work through because some of the, some of the legislation has changed. And so the, the climate guidance that they provided is, you know, does, it talks about, you know, flood mitigation and, you know, these other things that are now happening as the climate has, has, has changed. And so it's, it's, the, the greenhouse gas reduction measures, that's going to be, that could be potentially expensive, you know, you're, you're putting this requirement on top of a small, you know, say mom and pop grocery store that, that they now have to estimate what additional greenhouse gases are generated because of traffic to their grocery store. So there, there are some, there, there's real impacts, but it's, it's a matter of how each city is going to take those on and what, what the variability of those pathways for emissions is going to be.
So if we move forward on this and adopt this, is the charging stations a requirement? Or is that just one option of many that you could choose to implement? Just as an example.
I know EV charging stations are required, I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head who is required to do them.
Okay.
So there, there may be certain cities in Washington that have to have EV charging stations as part of every development, and there may be others that, that don't.
I guess my biggest fear comes from, we keep talking about a housing crisis, an affordable housing crisis, a lack of affordable housing, and at the same time, we're making it harder and more difficult to build housing as well as promote business, small business. So I would not personally want to do anything that is going to further cause difficulty in remedying those first two things, which we have been told are major things for the last ten years.
Yep.
You got a bunch of projects going into the house right now. You guys, I don't know, building apartment complex. I know contractors that got millions of dollars of blood coming down this area to start building. Personally, I worked for Rob Wesson for four years in that time, four twenty-nine city, and then has millions of dollars, if you buy that man in this town, you'll have anything you want as far as a housing crisis goes. Not lower income housing, he doesn't build that. That one will send you construction out of Wimble, that's their specialty, lower income apartment complex.
Let us finish talking about this and then we'll have the public comment.
I want to say something about the EV station.
Okay, say something about the EV station, then we got to keep doing this, and you can public comment in a minute.
If us can go to the government, ask for a hundred billion dollars, how much does one of these things cost, just one?
We don't know. I don't know. That's not what, really what we're talking about exactly.
You're talking about implementing one of these, right, Alfred?
We are talking about possibly including it in the comprehensive plan as a chapter in the comp plan.
Subsection of your idea to borrow this hundred thousand bucks?
That, it's a project over the next year and a half, so it's not happening tonight, you'll have plenty of time to comment.
Just go pump for it out, man, there's a nasty somebody. Three hundred thousand dollars, dude, why not take it, run with it? You went to the best high school in Tenino, right?
Who are you talking to?
Isn't that the mayor?
No.
Who's that guy?
Dan Penrose, he's our planner.
Dan Penrose?
Yeah.
The city planning commissioner guy.
He's the planner, yeah.
And Rainey, I already talked to Rainey about paint job, I wonder how much this is a per minterly cost because I can't get them to pay for anything like that. They don't even like dealing with it.
Well, I think you're going to have to set up an appointment to talk about it, because that's not what we're doing.
Seriously, I got a lot of great ideas for Tenino. And I built all my frigging life raising, three kids. My youngest daughter, my daughter's twenty-nine years old, okay?
Okay.
I know, or have a thirty-four-year-old son who's a sushi chef, and a thirty-one-year-old son who does nothing but build apartment complexes everywhere, and storage units. So what do you want to talk about? We can build this stuff.
Alrighty.
Have a good day.
You too.
I'm gone!
Thanks. Go ahead, Dan.
So, so do I, I kind of heard from most of the members that, that your preference is to pursue the climate resiliency grant at the same time that the work on the periodic update is occurring?
I mean, I think that makes sense, only because if we push the comp plan stuff off another year, I know there are things that we're trying to get rezoned, and there are areas that'll just sit stagnant probably until it's over, right? If we don't push the comp plan update through in some way, or is that not true?
Like West Tenino, for example, like the master plan zoning, we're trying to fix that, and so if I'm hearing you right, and we take the extension, then we won't have the comp plan done for a whole nother year, and so anything, nothing will happen out there until that time period.
Yeah, yes, I guess, I, I, I would maybe say, I don't think we have to take the entire extension, but when we add the climate piece on, let, let, let me have our team take a look at when we think we can accommodate that, because there's some technical pieces in there that I don't quite understand yet, like the greenhouse gas modeling, that may have to be done, because like you have to establish some baseline things so you know what you're adding to. So there may be some things that add to the timeframe. Again, I think we're fortunate in Tenino that we don't have to meet the exact same deadlines as the others, other cities, but I hear kind of the, the spirit of the conversation in the room is that the climate resiliency plan should be, we should apply for the grant money and try to do it, you know, within the same timeframe as the comp plan. True?
Yeah, if possible, that would be nice.
Yes.
Do you need any formal motion from us?
No, no, and I'll just double, I'll just double check with the mayor, and I think when I talked to him about it earlier, he was, he was supportive, so that's, we will, we'll work on that, we'll come back and, as I said, I will send you an email on what this all, some of the details in the Commerce website to talk about this legislation, but we'll, we'll add it into the mix and see how that impacts the, the schedule.
Can you tell us that number again, so I can look at it, I can pull it up and look at it, what's the?
The bill, the bill, the bill number, Dave?
Yeah.
It's eleven eighty-one, House Bill eleven eighty-one.
Okay, just to get familiar with it a little bit.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll do better than that, I'll send you like an FAQ on that as an attachment.
Nice, thank you.
I also had one more thing, we are taking the Housing Action Plan to council next week, and so council will ostensibly approve that document next week at their regular council meeting.
Okay.
The twenty-sixth.
And that concludes, yeah, right, the twenty-sixth, that concludes my report.
Sorry, the Housing Action Plan, from your discussions with, I assume, the mayor and the council, if you had them, is there anything that you think they're going to adjust in their meeting? Or do you think they're just going to pass it?
I haven't had any discussions about changes or, or anything else in the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We had our public comment. Now, we don't have any public hearings, so we'll go to unfinished business. Matthew, did you have something that you wanted to talk to us about? Matthew, did you have something that you wanted to talk to us about?
Yeah, so to Dave's question earlier about the RV ordinance, I did spend extensive time after that meeting trying to rewrite it. And I always came to a logistical issue. So my biggest issue in all implementation thought, because I figured it'd be easy to write it, but the implementation would be the hardest part of it. And I've always got stuck at the part where it would be hard to ever collect money because it was always based on like day fifteen, but it was based, the fee came out of their like sewer cost, which is collected, I think, monthly. So if it's day fifteen, are they paying a prorated twenty five dollars for those fifteen days? If they're on day, I'd say September twenty ninth, are they paying twenty five dollars for the month of September and then immediately paying twenty five dollars for the month of October? And that's where I always came to a logistics issue of how you'd implement it. So I didn't feel comfortable bringing something because I didn't ever think, no matter what we passed and moved to the council, would ever be something that could be implemented and actually enforced in a way that worked, if that makes sense. Because like we can pass a bill that says that after day fifteen they can, they have to pay. Or we could even pass it one at day zero, I think day zero is the only way. But the issue is always more logistical than that. And I don't necessarily feel comfortable writing a bill, not even a bill, but writing like a change to it without having that extensive knowledge. Like I think if it's something that we want to do, I think it's something that we should try to incorporate if we do reworking of code in the comprehensive plan. Because then it's done by Dan or, oh my gosh, I can't remember her name now. But basically it's done by someone who has other resources and might have more knowledge. Because I don't want to write something for us to move it and then when Courtney goes to collect sewer payments, people are angry at her because they're paying twenty five dollars on September twenty ninth and then twenty five dollars on October first.
I'd make it real easy. I'd just have the sewer billing start at the first regular whatever, at the end of that fifteen days and they get fifteen day grace period, so be it. They get fifteen days, just start the sewer payment on the first, whatever their first billing is after their first, after their fifteen day period is up. It'll be my-
But all this comes with a notification, right? Like they would receive a notification that they are now being billed?
In theory, if they come to the office and get that permit.
Then they would be well aware.
Then they would know. Yeah.
And then if they, somebody just did it and they got caught, they would either have to get a permit or be asked to leave, basically.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's-
Yeah, it always came down to a logistics of actual enforcement that I didn't have enough knowledge or felt comfortable doing it all the way.
I'd imagine if somebody was well aware, like in fifteen days after your approval, that you will now be billed, that it's okay to now send them a bill, whether it's prorated or not, like full amount or just partial amount.
Yeah, yeah, like I'm not saying that we couldn't do prorated or even first of the month, whatever that was. But it, like, I don't have the extensive knowledge to write it in a way that can be implemented. And like from my experience in state government and now federal government, like the issue is when people write things without like that implementation knowledge and I don't necessarily want us to feel accomplished in passing something and then it not actually be something that can be implemented. Like I think it makes total sense because I think there needs to be some sort of way to have accountability or equity or whatever you want to call it. But I think I don't have the knowledge to make sure that it can be implemented correctly in the way that I would write it. So that's why I feel like if it's something that is of importance, we implement it through code rewriting in the comprehensive plan like we already talked about. Because then it would have more eyes and honestly, people with more extensive knowledge of how to write code.
Like, that's an option, whoever you're gonna be doing it in, just put it in the code section where we talked about. It's already in there about the fifteen days, so we could just, if we want to expand it on it in there. Yeah, so maybe that's a good idea, just put it, just piece of the comprehensive plan and see what happens.
Yeah, I just always came to the point of, I didn't know how to write it in an implementation strategy way. And really, I think it's, really comes down to how the whole thing needs to be done, but I think that's unfortunately, an even deeper conversation, even though we've had tons of discussions about it, on how to truly collect that twenty five dollars.
Small thing where we can just try, try a very small scale and see how it went.
The enforcement's always been the most challenging aspect of the thing. But it's just worked.
Yeah. So that's my update.
So what do you think?
On this? I think, yeah, let's just wait and see what comes out of the hole. I'm kind of gave up on it.
Keep it on the back burner.
Yeah.
It's almost winter.
Yeah, it's winter now, so yeah, I was hoping to get it done for summertime when people are traveling and want to stay with their families for a while, so. Got a whole nother year, yeah.
Something to consider in the future, I suppose. Okay, well, I think that's it for unfinished business then unless we need, want to talk about that further. And so then we'll go into new business. We want to talk about the fire department needing a spot in Weston.
So this has been going on, the fire department's been trying to find a place to build, you know, this building over here is old. Theoretically, I guess they could go up and build a couple stories, but they really don't want to do that and they can avoid it. So they've been looking for property. Really, not much property big enough within the Tenino city limits for them. But they talked to the landowner out there where the equestrian facility is and apparently they have like an eleven acre parcel that already has a house on it that the guy that used to own it, I can't think of his name. Yeah, I think he's still there.
Oh.
I think is what I heard last.
Okay.
But anyway, talking to Dan, that there's not any in that code, there's not any reference to fire departments or I don't know if it's a certain-
There wouldn't be, I know.
I mean, he said there's no other place in town where that's the case, but when they did that out there, apparently that was not included. Now, there's a timeline here. They're trying to get this, you know, they've got a grant and they, I mean, they got a grant and then they got some money from the state. And I don't think it's on limited timeline for them to get this thing started.
No, 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 yeah, it's a bond.
A bond.
Yeah, a certain amount of time. And one of the really, really big pushes on this was that stakeholders within the city wanted the headquarters station to remain in city limits.
I have an interest too.
And we have exercised every, like, all the properties within the city limits and we've come up short. So we have a couple other properties already identified that we could do if we cannot, if we can't do it in the city limits. But that is gonna make some stakeholders within the city upset.
This is the bond, the six million dollar something bond that voted last year or the year before?
Two years ago, yeah.
So there's been a few questions. One is, it was asked a long time ago, can we just add somehow, how long would it take just to add that use out there? So at least that use is settled, that it could be built out there. And other questions were asked, kind of asked was, at the gopher stuff out there, if that site's developed, is it even possible to build a station out there, you know, with that, with all those restrictions? So there's some questions we gotta ask, but I think the fire department really wants to, I think they're just trying to get a feel of we and the city council are willing to, if they end up getting that property and can build out there, is that something, is there some kind of resistance to build on that property out there? I know one of the city council members apparently talked about they would like to see a motel out there, you know? But they don't want to dive into this thing and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars unless they kind of at least have a general idea that we're gonna try to move forward. And so I guess my first thing is, is can we somehow get that zoning that allows a fire station out there if everything else lines up?
Can we change the zoning out on Weston I know, Dan, before the comp plan updates are done to accommodate the fire department? Or is that not possible?
Probably not change the zoning because it also triggers a comp plan amendment.
Right.
And that's the part we can't jump in in the middle of the comp plan periodic update with a comp plan amendment. The, what I offered to the police, or sorry, the fire chief was a text change to the code. But, but that gets kind of problematic as well because right now in, in Weston I know district, you public services or public safety is not listed as an approved use, so it just, it's a kind of a complicated process, but we could do it, it's just not gonna be immediate.
If you do a text change, do you have like even a rough timeframe of what that would take?
He's easier right now.
I'm running the chief with a rough timeframe. We chatted about it earlier this year. I'm gonna be consistent with what I told him, so I'm kind of, I'll do a rapid search and see what I can find on that.
And then once he answers that, I know another question. So where is Dr. Burnett's house? I don't even know where it is.
I think it's in the back, when you go down that first driveway that goes back there, I think it's kind of at the back of that.
So before you get to the equestrian, equestrian center?
Okay, do you kind of like right across from like the-
Stitch nine, I used to make it across, you know?
So I, I'm not gonna ask me that question, but I estimated about a six month, you know, five to six month process for the tech tech change to the Western Anazo to allow emergency services.
And do you know if a pocket gopher survey or any critical area stuff has already occurred there that would allow this to happen or do they have to do that too?
They would have to do that too. They'd have to look at the soils.
So they wouldn't, they can't even do that till next summer, right? I mean, because you, there's a season for the reviews and I think it's kind of getting towards the end of that right now.
Yeah, my guess, my guess is they could get in there before the October window closes and figure out if there's pocket gophers.
So if they were gonna go for some six month thing, they would have to do that in the next month, basically, in order to be able to make it worth it for us to do all this extra text amendment, whatnot, otherwise they're gonna be waiting a whole year at least for that.
Right, and at that point, you would just wait for the comp plan change to occur to facilitate the fire.
Right.
And I don't know that we have that much time. Which is the reality.
What are the other locations that have been affected?
Till the end. Wait, it's a huge impact here.
The reason that, I mean, apart from response time considerations, the main, another reason is because everybody's fire insurance rates will go up for commercial, right? If the station moves outside of city limits.
Yeah, probably. And you know, I mean, I'm biased, right? I live in the city. I would prefer to have the headquarters station in the city limits.
I don't even care if it's the headquarters, but I'm worried if responding if it's in our city.
Yeah. Interesting. How small would a building, response you're gonna have to be in order to not have the negative effects that people are afraid of?
And the problem is, keep in mind, we're also talking money, right? So all of a sudden, you're looking at buying or build a headquarters station and then a secondary station.
That's not gonna happen, yeah.
Well, they do have this building still.
I was like, can someone refresh me on what's wrong with this building?
They still own this building.
Everything.
They just bought it, like, didn't the fire department only buy it like four or five years ago or something?
I just know it's like addition after addition after reconfiguration after addition.
It's not made for the staffing like they have now.
Alright.
I mean, the other option, I still could look at going up, but like I said, I don't know, we haven't really discussed that a lot and using that same law, but-
Well, if it's all additions, they probably have to tear it down and build it back up again, so.
Yeah, they might have to start over. Okay, I'll pass that on.
Perfect.
Alright, so any other new business or further discussion of the Weston I know area? Nope. Alright, with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Dan.
Good one.